Good morning and welcome to everyone that's here and that's viewing online or on TV. We call this meeting to order, let's have our roll call. Alright, thank you. Since we last met, there's been a lot that's gone on in our nation, and we're going to address a little bit of that before we get started with the invocation. And I just wanted to go on to say for a second, the commissioners have granted me a moment of personal privilege. I had breakfast with my 14-year-old this morning, and he's leaving for Nicaragua in a few hours. And, you know, I'm afraid of his judgment when he gets back, because he's going to fly back into the most powerful, most rich nation in the history of this world. And it's a place where one out of five kids are going to go to bed hungry tonight, we're throwing our mentally ill away in jails, and we still hate each other for the color of our skins, 150 years after a civil war, 50 years after the Civil Rights Movement. And that culminated in states that border us, in Charleston, South Carolina, nine people were killed for being black and being inside of their house of worship. And just last week, five Marines were killed by a young man whose heart was hardened by radical Islam. And just for a moment, before the invocation, I'd like for us to rise and have a moment of silence for the people we've lost and for the innocence that our young people are losing every day in what is, what should be a peaceful and a more blessed nation than we are. I think we focus too much on reality shows and not enough on reality and how we treat each other, because we're an unforgiving people. We value, we value personal attacks far more than we value people's souls. And if you'll just join me in a moment of silence, thank you.
Your God, we come this morning to ask for forgiveness. Bless these your people, bless those that do not know you and are part of their sins. Help them to find you. Bless this meeting, help us make the decision that will be beneficial to these, your citizens of Pitt County. Bless people everywhere, put love in their heart and take away hate. We ask these blessings in thy holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the, with the caveat that we move the presentation of the Eagle Scouts, followed by the Employee Service Awards prior to the public hearings.
So move.
Second.
Let's vote.
Yeah, I move that we approve the resolution for the Eagle Scout Award.
Second.
We need to finish the vote on the first. Mr. Hammond?
And now on the Eagle Scout Awards? Thank you.
Well, good morning. Today, we're going to honor two men who have earned the Eagle Scout Award in the Boy Scouts of America Organization. This is the highest honor or rank that a Boy Scout can, can earn. We will do the first one who's on the agenda, then we will do the one that we don't have listed. So if Garrett McLeod Agundis, if I pronounced that right, will come forward with his parents, and anybody else who's brought here, scout leaders, anything he may have? Chairman, if you'd like, I can read the certificate?
Sure.
Okay, show it to the audience first. So Certificate of Appreciation is awarded to Garrett McLeod Agundis, if I pronounced that right, for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. For his project, he prepared 11,000 meals for Stop Hunger Now worldwide. This is presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, this 20th day of July 2015, signed by the Chairman Glenn Webb. And let me just make a comment that the Eagle Scout projects are a true project normally, as well as family friends who participate on it, and there are normally, sometimes hundreds of hours that go into doing a project, from planning, execution, follow-up, the entire thing. So that project is no small deal, so.
Congratulations. You want to thank Mom and Dad for helping you?
And our next honoree is Dylan Charles Justice, if he'll come forward with his parents. As they come forward, as we always like to note during these recognitions, that nationally, I think it's about 2% to 3% of all Boy Scouts go on to earn the, the rank of Eagle Scout in Pitt County. That percentage is probably about double that amount, so we're proud of the young men here in Pitt County. So again, Certificate of Appreciation is awarded to Dylan Charles Justice for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. For his project, he built two picnic tables and two benches to be placed in the courtyard of the Oakmont Baptist Church Youth Building, again presented this 20th day of July 2015 by our Chairman Glenn Webb.
Just thanks, Mom and Dad.
Thank you. Alright, next we have the Employee Service Awards. If Florida Hardy will come forward, our Human Resources Director. For Employee Service Awards, on a quarterly basis, we recognize employees in the five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, sometimes 35 year. This morning is kind of a short list compared to, probably the shortest I've seen, but we have five, 10, and 25-year recognition. So, since we call your name, if you'll come forward, we've got a certificate for you, then the appropriate tenure recognition as well. So, in the five-year category, and if we can, let's hold applause until the end of the, all of the names in each category. So, the five years, Sophia Benton with Public Health. Claude Christopher IV, Sheriff's Office. Nathan Edwards II, Sheriff's Office. Jonathan Harrell, Communications. Brittany Kinder, Public Health. Kayla Manning, Public Health. Brandon McKinney, Sheriff's Office. Sarah Radcliffe, Finance Department. Robert Roach, Sheriff's Office. And our last five-year recognition is to Casey Wilson, Sheriff's Office. A round of applause. We have two 10-year employees, Kelly Clay in Social Services. Deidra Hill, Social Services. Okay, round of applause, yeah. And our last category, we're going to jump to 25 years, we have four employees we're recognizing this morning. Susan Bullock, so, actually, all four of these are from Social Services, but Susan Bullock with DSS. You ready to pose for a picture, your director? Natalie Hobbs, Social Services.
She's still smiling.
Nanette Perry, Social Services. And our last 25 is to Mary Ravilla, Social Services again.
Good morning, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Before Scott Mason's announcement, I just want to say thank you for everything you do. I know we make a lot of decisions in here, but they're totally pointless without the fine employees that we have. As I travel across the state, as you know, I do a lot of stuff with the Association of Commissioners, and Pitt County is the class of the state. It may not always feel like it when you're the day-to-day employee, but I promise you that you really set us apart from the other 99 counties. I couldn't be more proud of you. Scott, you have an announcement about?
Yes, we have a short reception. If the audience will come in to the door on the left, we've had some refreshments set up in the back, and then exit here on the door on your right, and feel free to hang out for a little bit. So, thank you.
Welcome back and thanks for bearing with us. We'll now get to the regular business of the board. First thing we have is a public hearing. Mr. Rhodes?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have five zoning-related public hearings this morning. The first three are for conditional use permits, and I'll go through some of the standard language for the first one, and that will apply to the following two. Then we have a couple of other items as well. The first one being for Melissa Everett, and this again is a conditional use permit request, and this is for a residential daycare center. All three of these conditional use permits will follow quasi-judicial procedures. Remember, that's more formal than some of our rezoning processes. And what we'll be listening for today is establishment of the facts in any of these cases. The witnesses, anyone wishing to speak, should be placed under oath, and we're looking for true evidence, not opinions, this morning. So it all needs to be supported by some type of detailed evidence if there's some discussion on an item. We will keep detailed records of this hearing. No ex parte communication between members and the people that are petitioning for these particular permits, and any appeals of these conditional use permits will be to Superior Court. So first up, for Melissa Everett's conditional use permit, we'll ask the clerk to swear in any of the witnesses.
Anyone wishing to speak on this issue or be sworn in as a witness, please approach the podium.
For the Melissa Everett conditional use permit, this is for a, again, residential daycare on Jonathan Place, 529 Jonathan Place. Just so you know, Ms. Everett has run a, an in-home daycare just three doors down on this particular street for several years, and she's looking through the licensing process with the state and also through the zoning regulations. She has to come in and have that moved to the other property just three doors down, and she wishes to locate there. A reminder, since we're doing both a residential daycare facility on this particular conditional use, and we'll be doing more of a commercial-style daycare on the next one, a definition for the residential daycare facility is a facility licensed by the State of North Carolina, in a residence provides, that provides childcare for at least two children, but not more than nine. Just to orient you where this property is located, Old River Road, it's about a mile south of its intersection with NC 222, if you're heading toward Belvoir. This is within Crystal Acres subdivision, and here's Jonathan Place, right here. The property is noted in the bold line. And you can see all of the properties within this particular subdivision are residential in nature. As we deal with these items from time to time, you will recall there are several standards that are included in our zoning ordinance for these types of uses, one being outdoor activity areas must be fenced in by at least, a fence at least six feet in height. And in the residential districts, such as the one we have here today, they, these uses shall not operate more than 24 hours per day. All these conditional use permits, we do have to look at several criteria for consideration. The first one will, this particular use materially danger or endanger the public health or safety. Again, this is in a residential area. We feel like this is a daycare facility within a home, and it will not endanger health or safety. Will it injure the value of adjoining properties? We feel like it will not. Again, it is, it will be held in a residential dwelling within a residential area. Is it in harmony with the area? We, the staff do believe that it is, and it is consistent with the surrounding land uses. Is it consistent with our plans that have been adopted by the board? We believe that it is. So, Mr. Chairman, two motions today, as far as staff recommendation. Number one, acknowledge that the package is complete. And secondly, approve the conditional use permit per the zoning ordinance, and in this case, Ms. Everett's intending to operate between the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 mid-night. So we're ready for the public hearing.
Thank you. With that, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against this? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. It's a pleasure to the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Most improved, second.
I was going to motion that we approve this recommendation and include item number one and two, and as proposed by the Planning Department.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion and a second?
Second.
For the discussion? Let's vote. Mr. Rhodes?
A second conditional use permit for a daycare center this time is for Tyroneza Parker. And again, we'll be using the same quasi-judicial procedures this morning, and we'll move forward with swearing in by the clerk to the board.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to be a witness on this matter, please approach the podium.
Ms. Parker's request is located on property at 903 Catherine's Place. This is within a residential subdivision as well. Again, this is for daycare center. This is more of a commercial nature. In this case, it's not a requirement that the individual live in the home where the daycare is being located. This is a daycare center, and the definition here, it is licensed by the state, and at any one time, there are three or more preschool-aged children, or nine or more school-aged children. It can also be a facility for adult care. This property is located off NC 903, also north of the river, just before you get to the intersection of Bearish Construction Road, Bearish Construction Road and NC 33. This is Catherine's Place Street, and at the very end on the cul-de-sac bulb, you can see, this is the location for the proposed facility. All the homes within this particular development also are used for residential purposes. In our zoning ordinance, there's also requirements that go along with this particular type of use in a residential district, similar to our in-home daycares. There is a requirement that the area, the activity areas be fenced in with a fence at least six feet in height, and also, again, these facilities should not operate a full 24-hour basis. The criteria, again, in this case, there are some peculiarities here with this particular one, and I'll mention those as part of the criteria when we consider these. Will the material, will the facility materially endanger the public health or safety? The use is a daycare center, and we feel like it will not endanger health or safety. Will it substantially injure the value of the adjoining property? One thing to recognize here, this facility has been permitted before as a daycare center, and therefore, we feel like it's similar type of structure in the development, and it has been used for similar use in the past, and we feel like it will not substantially injure the value of adjacent properties. Is it in harmony with the area? The daycare center is located in predominantly residential area and will serve the area residents, and we feel like it's, there are some limitations with this use. It is served with the SEPIC system, and there are particular limitations on the number of children that can be served on this site, typically about 30 to 35 on this particular parcel. And in addition, is it in conformity with plans that have been adopted by the board? We believe that it is. So again, two motions here. Staff is recommending approval. Motion number one being that the application's complete. Number two, that it meets certain provisions of the ordinance. In this case, Ms. Parker intends to operate between 6:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. With this type of use, there's also some parking considerations for those that are dropping off kids, and also those that are working there, and the site plan will need to be approved with the required parking. So with that, we're ready for the public hearing.
Declare the public hearing open. Is anybody to speak for or against this? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed. Pleasure to the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve this as the submitted recommendations.
I'll second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Let's vote. Mr. Rhodes?
The third conditional use permit this morning is for a solar energy facility, commonly known as a solar farm. You may recall, we put these regulations in place probably about three years ago when we started to get requests for this type of use in the community. We've had several of these come through for your consideration. Again, today, we'll be following the quasi-judicial procedures set forth, and any appeal will go to the Superior Court. So, third time, we'll ask the clerk to swear in any witnesses this morning.
Any witnesses for this public hearing? Please approach the podium.
This property is located near the intersection of US 13 and Nash Joyner Road. You can see, this is within an area that's zoned as RA, all shown in green. This area bounded by the bold line is about 75 acres, about 45 of which will be for the use itself with the improvements for the solar energy facility. There are, you can also see at the intersection here of Nash Joyner Road and US 13, there are some areas that have commercial designations as well, in red. Existing land use in the area fairly mimics what we just showed on the zoning map. There are some commercial uses shown in red. The other color that's distinguished here is the tan, and that would be lots or areas that are used for residential purposes. This is a very busy plan, but I at least wanted to show you, give you an indication of what is proposed on-site. When we get one of these requests in with the application, there is a site plan that's required. You can see there's an area, so again, better than 70 acres in the entire tract that's shown bounded in red. The area that's actually to be improved or constructed on is bounded in blue. These are called arrays. This is where the solar panels, here's an area here in the diagram that shows how these will be constructed. These are just rows of these panels that will be laid out on this particular site. Some other improvements that go along with this particular request would be the proposed landscape buffer that goes around the complete perimeter of the area that's being improved. There is some existing vegetation along the back property line that is to remain and also serve as screening. There are inverters as part of this proposal. Those are substantially sized mechanical units that actually take the, the service that comes off the arrays and ultimately converts that into a product that can then go into our electrical system. Those particular inverters, we require that they be set back a certain distance further than the actual structures, and in turn, you can see those are located more deeply into the lot. There is an access road that comes off Nash Joyner Road that will provide access for construction and also any improvements on the lot. There are a number of requirements that go along with this particular type of use. 50-foot setbacks from all property lines, that's included on the site plan, along with 100-foot separation for the inverters, or 150 separation from the inverters. All the equipment has to be less than 25 feet in height. Several submittal requirements, and you may recall, we did require decommissioning plan once these types of uses go out of use. We asked that those be taken offline, as well as cleaned up off the site. Must meet all building code requirements, and I will tell you, it takes an inordinate amount of time from the inspector's perspective to go out and look at these individual structures to make sure they're wired properly and that they're constructed properly. Fencing and screening requirements, we've talked about, and again, abandoned equipment must be removed after one year of closure. These same criteria apply here. Will this particular use endanger the public health or safety? We believe that it will not, due to, does not emit any harmful products. It will be screened and buffered from the adjacent properties. Will it injure the value of the adjoining properties? This property is located in a fairly rural area, mostly agricultural uses. There are some limited residential areas around there. With the screening and buffering and separation- With the screening and buffering and separation requirements, we feel like it will not substantially injure the adjoining properties. Is it in harmony with the area? We believe that it is, based on the conditions that it must meet. And does it meet all the plans and ordinances by the commissioners? We believe that it does. So with that, two motions, again, acknowledge that the application is complete, and approve the conditional use permits subject to those items in our zoning ordinance. There are a few other conditions as well. With all the impervious surface that goes along with this type of use, this will need to comply with a stormwater ordinance. Soil erosion plan may also be required. And a Department of Transportation driveway permit is required. And they must also show that during construction, there's sufficient on-site parking. So we've had some issues with parking along state roads. It's a little bit dangerous. So DOT is going to take care of that with a driveway permit. We're ready for the public hearing.
Declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak for or against this item?
Good morning. My name is Luke Brouillard. I'm here with Harvest Solar. Just wanted to thank the board for the opportunity today. This project is approximately 45 acres, as mentioned. It's a $20 million investment, and it will bring local jobs to the area, local revenue for the county, state, of course, and local farmers as well. So I just want to thank the board for the opportunity, and I can answer any questions if they have.
Mr. Farley and Ms. Lee.
So we can call us a solar photovoltaic farm?
Yes, sir.
You say that, I may not have pronounced it right.
Photovoltaic farm, yes, sir.
Okay. And you're taking, you're harvesting DC from the photovoltaic devices?
Yes.
And you're converting it to AC?
That's correct.
I am just interested, what's the DC, what's the inverter take it on AC? Is it 48 volts DC, 10 volts? What is it?
The exact voltage, I could not tell you. The nuts and bolts are a little beyond me.
The inverter bumps it up so it can go into the utility grid.
It does, yes. The inverter basically is a control center for all of the electricity, the DC electricity.
Who manufactures that inverter?
We currently have this set up by Eaton.
Uh huh.
Eaton inverters. There are 1670 inverters. There are approximately five of them here.
Yeah.
They're rather large for what has been typical in the past.
And they must be very efficient to, you know, okay.
They are. They're 97, 98% efficient.
Yeah, yeah.
It's very clean, no moving parts.
My question has to do with, you said it would bring jobs? I'm always curious about jobs. How many jobs will it produce?
We're looking at approximately 50 local jobs that are temporary during the construction, which may take three to four months.
And you hire locally?
Yes, as much as we can.
Sounds good to me.
As much as we can, yes, ma'am.
Ms. Ward.
Could you tell me, or maybe James can, how the size of this one relates to the one that's in Bethel? I think most people have probably seen that one, or, you know, ridden by it, and I know they're pleased over there to have it, and there haven't been any repercussions.
It's a little bit larger. I believe the one around Bethel was closer to 30 acres, as far as the improvements were concerned.
Thank you.
And I could also state that that solar farm takes up more acres per output of the system because of the way that it's designed. So ours is actually 45 acres, but it may be two to three times more at size in output. So it will power about 100.
I'm for it. I just kind of wanted to give the citizens a kind of an image.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We approve this, subject to the additional conditions as outlined on page 29.
Second. Let's vote.
Second.
Next item is for a straight rezoning request. So you're more familiar with this. This is not a quasi-judicial process, more legislative in nature. This is one that some of you may be familiar with. It was requested to be rezoned previously to general commercial conditional use. For a particular use, this was for RV sales and service. Basically, today, the petitioner is requesting to have it downzoned, have it zoned back to the way it was previously. He is no longer, no longer has that business open. This particular site is located on Sunnyside Road. The area in the far left bottom corner is actually associated with Bradford Creek subdivision, just to kind of give you a better orientation. This is a little bit further east on Sunnyside Road. The entire property is close to 20 acres. The area we're dealing with is a little bit better than acre in size. You can see, it's kind of in the heart of the property, and this is where the RV sales and service area had been located. This is the building that was part of that property, and you can see it's just adjacent to a residential structure on the same property. This will show you the current land use plan. All this area is shown as residential, agricultural. And with that, you can see, this is the actual zoning map. This is the small area that had been previously a conditional use on that particular property for general commercial. In the RA district, it's intended to accommodate low-density residential uses, as well as public and institutional uses, and remain fairly rural in nature. And we believe, given the subject's proximity to other similarly zoned properties, we believe it's in concert with the land use plan, and it meets the requirements or guidelines for the rural agricultural district. The planning board reviewed this at its meeting last month and unanimously recommended approval. Staff recommends approval as well. And with that, there are some things that we've talked about in the past that new legislation requires, and that be a consistency statement, and that's included in your package tonight or today for your consideration. The planning board has considered it to be consistent and also reasonable and within public interest for the proposed zoning district that's being proposed here. So with that, we're ready for the public hearing.
Declare the public hearing open. Anybody to speak on this item for or against? Seeing none, I declare it closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Let's vote. It didn't take. Thank you. Ms. Rose?
Okay. And the last public hearing this morning is for one that you may be familiar with. We considered this about a year ago, is for Alex Pine Straw and Mulch. It is a rezoning application amendment request. This particular request has been considered and approved in the past. There have been some substantial changes to the site plan, and therefore, it's back before you for consideration today. This was approved, as I mentioned, about a year ago. This is located on Ellison Court at the intersection with County Home Road. And the request at that point was a general commercial conditional district whereby they would operate a pine straw and mulch distribution area. As I've mentioned, there have been substantial changes, much more intensive type operation being proposed out on this site now. And with that, we felt it necessary to bring before the board. This is the location, again, County Home Road. This is the intersection of County Home Road with Worthington Road, DH Conley being about a mile to the east on this particular road. This is heading back up toward Wintergreen and on the north side to the County Home Road property. Property is here at the intersection of Ellison and County Home Road with about, and a little bit better than acre property considered. The property has already been rezoned for general commercial conditional district. You can see the area there, within the area surrounding it being rural residential in green. And this is the previously approved site plan, just to remind you of where we were previously. There were, this is the boundary, about an acre in size, a very small office building in the back corner, some area for storage and parking, and a grassed area. So very simple type development on the property at that point. There was some vegetation and screening proposed around the perimeter of the property. The new site plan, we have mulch bins that are adjacent to County Home Road. We have a pine straw storage area. This will have a structure associated with it, as well as the equipment parking would also have a structure associated with that area. The office area has been moved frontwards and also is larger in nature. And you can see, much of the area here will also be improved for gravel driveway and parking. Screening is also around the perimeter, and there's a privacy fence that's along two sides of this property. The planning board reviewed the rezoning request, and in this case, the actual change to the site plan, and believe that is consistent and is reasonable and within the public interest. We, as staff, believe that it's also appropriate for approval, and it is located within the crossroad, community crossroads area, and therefore, is appropriate for general commercial. We believe also that the improvements, the fencing, the other types of improvements will also minimize any conflicts with adjacent properties. Staff recommends approval, as does the planning board, and we're with, ready for the public hearing.
Declare the public hearing open. Anyone to speak for or against this item?
Thank you, Chairman Webb and Commissioners. I'm Mike Baldwin, and I represent Alex Pine Straw and Mulch. As I said, about a year ago when this came up, my theory was, if you work hard enough at anything, you can be successful. And that's truly what these people have done. They're, they have a successful business. At that time, I was working for Ludy Moore, who owned the Wintergreen Mobile Home Park. And they had the property under contract with Ludy Green, Ludy Moore, excuse me. And so the lady who owns Alex Pine Straw and Mulch now, not only owns this piece, but she owns the entire Mobile Home Park as well, and has been a resident out there ever since I can remember. What we've done different here is in meetings with them, they have some nice plans on what they'd like to see their facility look like in the future. Instead of where I showed on the previous site plan of having just the pine straw, pine straw storage out in a grassed area, they want to keep it under a shelter out of the sun, which dries it out. They gave me the number of bales of pine straw they wanted to be able to store at one time, so I did the calculations on how big the shelter needed to be. They informed me of all the equipment that they use, and if you've seen their equipment riding around town, their vehicles and everything, they have first-class equipment. So we made provisions for a shelter for them to drive their equipment, trailers, trucks, and things like that. And they wanted to have a few more varieties of mulch, that I think I previously had four bins, and I think we have six now. So with that said, the office is getting bigger. They want to have a few more employees in there. There is a privacy slash and what I'll call security fence, because they do, you know, along with separating this from some of the residential uses out there, they want security as well. I've enjoyed working with these people. This will be, they won't be doing it all at one time. They will do it, I know they do want to get the office set up immediately, but it will be, as their finances allow. This will be their ultimate goal. And I'd appreciate y'all's approval of this revised plan, and be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Baldwin?
Mr. Garris. The mulch bins that, according to the map, they would be built along County Home Road, would there be a privacy fence there?
Mr. Garris, they weren't, they had planned on putting, instead of having a privacy fence, they had planned on putting vegetation screening.
Okay, good. So that will screen it off from County Home Road.
They had even talked about doing a brick, you know, as you see, the brick signs and everything to complement it.
Mr. Chairman, in my opinion, this is a real success story in our county. These votes came from Mexico, I think, with nothing, and they have built this up and even bought that trailer park out there. They've done an excellent job, and I would make a motion that we approve.
Motion second. Mr. Hammond, do you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like some pleasure, the public hearing.
Declare the public hearing closed. Thank you, Ms. Rose. Next item is our public address to the board. Mr. Manager, is anybody signed up?
Yes, we have. One person signed up, Brenda Harris.
Ms. Harris? Madam Attorney, if you'll remind us of the public address.
I will, yes. Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each person is allowed to speak up to three minutes. Please state your name and address prior to speaking. All comments should be informative and constructive. Inappropriate comments, including profanity or personal attacks, will not be tolerated.
I'm Brenda Harris, and my information's on file. One of the commissioners said you are an advocate, but you also are a person that brings agenda to the platform, so that we can look to see whether it's fair or not. Everything on your agenda today has something to do with your federal funds. I have sung like an absolute bird on how important it was to understand what laws are, and they're not laws for me or you. You know, we have attorneys on the board, and as our attorney, that reminds you of what the law is. I've encouraged you to get a report of how the Department of Justice handles things, because everything that is coming to the county has bound by specific rules and regulations. I want to bring you the voting issue of where your residency is. I was at the hearing, and we're not here to discuss the elements. We're here to discuss the law. If the laws are the law...
Excuse me, Ms. Harris. Could you speak in the microphone a little bit?
Yes, okay.
I get some of what you're saying, not all of it.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. What I'm saying is, is that I was at the hearing on residency, and it's important, because we have November elections coming forth. What I want to employ you to do is to look at everything and every situation that you bring before the county. And when you say it's a hearing or it's facts, it has to really be facts, folks. It has to go back to what the Constitution says, which is federal law, what you've adopted for the state, and then what you have adopted as ordinances and things for the county. But when you alter that and you make it intent, you walk into dangerous grounds. So what I'm saying to you is this, that whether it be an elected official, whether it be voting, we have to make sure that it's not intent where we live, it's where we live. It's not opinion. It has to be what we can stand on, because when the federal investigation comes, and it's on its way, it's not just one thing that they're looking at. They're looking at everywhere. Pitt County and North Carolina has allowed a breach in what reasonable is and what the law is as it's written, because it is not your job to interpretate in North Carolina and in Pitt County what the law is. It's your obligation to follow it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. No one else has signed up? Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board? All right, seeing no one move on, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under items report, number one, manager's report, next meeting dates for the month of August, be back on a regular schedule. First Monday, the August 3, the 9:00 a.m. meeting, and the third Monday, August 17, will be your 6:00 p.m. meeting. On the next item, we would like to turn this over to the county attorney, but we'd like to introduce you to our new risk manager for our organization, Janice.
Yes, I'm pleased to introduce you to Chris Barnes. If Chris would stand up. Chris has just joined our organization today, is his first day as our new risk manager. He comes to us with over 15 years' experience with Wayne County Public Schools. He lives in Pitt County and comes with a wealth of experience with regard to insurance, safety, and risk management practices. So you may recall that the risk manager position was within the county manager's unit for some time. When that position vacated in March, and it's been vacant since that time, it was shifted to the legal department. I think that's a nice fit for risk management within the legal department, and we have done a fairly diligent recruiting process, and we're pleased to have Chris on board. So the departments will work closely with him to be sure we are maximizing all of our risk and safety practices. risk and safety practices.
Welcome.
Oh, can I, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, now this is a new question, you know, as a newbie. How many people is on your staff?
Okay, so I am, uh, we have two attorneys, me as the county attorney and Jordan Smith, who's right there is the assistant county attorney. Um, we represent this board of commissioners and all of the county departments. Um, I have one legal assistant, one paralegal, and now we have Chris, the risk manager. So we have grown from four to five people to manage all of your legal affairs for the county.
I was trying to get a count, I mean, you know, thank you.
Two lawyers.
Thank you. Chris, you want to give a speech?
You need to speak so I can remember your name because I'm the worst one up here for remembering names.
Well, I'm glad to be on board here in Pitt County. I've lived in Pitt County now for, uh, probably about 20 years and I've been in Goldsboro for the past 15, so I'd be back.
Welcome aboard.
We also have, starting, um, next Monday, the, the 27th, the, um, new county engineer that will, um, replace Phil Dickerson's, uh, position. Tim Corley, who's currently with the city of Greenville as one of their engineers, will begin with us. And when, um, he gets here in the maybe August timeframe, we'll bring him before you and introduce him as well. So we've made two key hires this week, um, within the organization, or this past month per se, but we'll bring him before you to introduce as well. And that's all that, well, one last item, the, um, the National Association of Counties Conference was held, um, about a week and a half ago. Um, it was a good conference in Charlotte. It was the, um, again, the national conference that we brought here. Last time it was in North Carolina, it was in the year 2000, so it's been 15 years. I didn't know if any of the commissioners who, who attended that had any comments to say about any thing that stood out to you and, at the conference?
Do you want to have any comments?
I think the chairman was a very well attended conference. I think over 1,200 registered, uh, participants. And one of the great things that I noted was that, uh, the jail, uh, focused in terms of, uh, having mentally ill, uh, patients, uh, in, in jails and they're, uh, having a national movement in terms of trying to eliminate, uh, those individuals with mental health problems in our jails. And I think our sheriff department now is making a concerted effort in, in dealing with that particular area. So, uh, that was one of, one of, one of the great things. And of course, veterans, uh, was another part that was very informative in that, uh, 1% of, of, of the US population, uh, serve in the military, protecting 99% of us, uh, throughout the nation. So, uh, but when they go home, sometimes they have problems in finding, uh, employment and, and homes, so we have to continue to focus on dealing with that. But it was very well, uh, very good workshop and, uh, and I think that the networking was certainly very beneficial.
Um, this seems to be my really first national convention and I found it quite informative. Not knowing what to expect, I saw other counties caucusing and talking with each other. I got a chance to do the networking thing and I attended everything I could on economic development and, and, um, infrastructure. So you all know what my focus is, as you don't. I really think we need that in a rural area and I attended everything I could on it. And I talked with everything, everyone I could about it. And, uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, our moving something across the river in that area as far as infrastructure development and jobs. So, um, I, yeah, I am a little loaded, uh, as far as gaining information. And, um, I appreciate the opportunity to share it with it. And, um, I did go to the women's session. Uh, I was surprised to see it on the agenda. And so my curiosity always moved me, so I did go to that. And I found it quite interesting for the, the ladies in the county to know that they do talk and they do share ideas in a cross-spectrum as to how they are received. And I found that interesting as well. I found that very interesting. But, um, and I look forward to, uh, sharing more in the future about it as I make some notes, especially for you, Mark.
Mr. Chairman, I was wondering, I was wondering where she's been, where the ladies didn't talk.
I found it quite interesting, I really did. And, um, I learned some things on some legal aspects of things, uh, in the, in outdoor committee or the outs, outer, what you call it, out-of-session committee? That's where the networking is. Very good. Saw Glenn a lot, too.
Yes. I think everyone that went, uh, learned a lot. I had the pleasure of serving as chairman of the law enforcement subcommittee for the National Association for the last year. And, uh, the incoming president saw fit to move me to vice chairman of the full committee. So I'll still be representing this county as well as 3,000 counties, parishes and boroughs for the National Association on Matters of Justice and Public Safety. And I'll, I'll do my best to represent us well.
I did apply for the rural thing, didn't I?
It should be coming soon.
I, I did apply for the rural committee.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first item is the 2015 Annual Settlement in Order of Collection. Um, you have in your packet the annual settlement, which, um, gives you an idea of what all we've been doing in the collection area for the past year. And it summarizes and gives you totals of that information. What I would ask that you do is to approve and sign the order of collection for the fiscal year 1516.
I move for approval.
Second that.
Mr. Rhodes, it, confirm again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the order of collection?
Yes, I say move.
All together? Okay.
Your motion is second. Motion second. Speaker.
And I know that the public can't see it, but it really is a outstanding report. You had a good year.
Thank you.
Better than any, I think, that I remember.
For the collection report, um, you have, uh, some charts, um, and it will illustrate what a good year we had. The first chart, um, tracks last year against the prior year on there, so you can see that The next chart you have is a chart of, of several years that provides just the real property year-end rates for the last seven years.
Kathy, I think, I think it's important to note that last year, ending June 30th, you ended with a real profit, a real property tax collection rate of 98.82%. And that was up from the prior year at 98.54. So, and you, as you can see on that chart, that we progressively are moving higher and higher, or Kathy and her staff are moving higher and higher in the county as well with your collection rate, which I think you should.
I was going to brag on that in the last.
I see you smiling.
Um, this chart that you have before you right now, um, is the uncollected left at the end of each year. And we will continue to work on that. And then your last chart. This last chart is a combination chart. It, it illustrates year-end rates for the last seven years for real and personal property, registered motor vehicles, and then the combined rates. Um, and if you'll note, on the 1415, you have, um, the highest rate on the chart. So that's the highest rate that we've had in seven years. Um, a lot of that is dependent on the two offices working together, the assessment office and the collection office. Because they do work hand in hand, the better, um, accurate bills that they put out, the better it helps the collection staff. And that staff is, um, of collectors is headed up by Raymond Revilla, who is the deputy tax collector, and he is here with me today. So I would like to, um, thank him and his staff and the assessor's staff for doing such a fine job and, uh, giving us the highest collection rate that we've had in the past seven years. Thank you.
Thank you. Your motion is settled, Mr. Rhodes.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Ms. Elliott?
I have a handout for you. Um, it's coming around maybe, or has already been around? Coming around, okay, great. Let me get everything in the right height here. Mr. Elliott had asked that I come and kind of give you an update on where the state and Pitt County is with respect to the food and nutrition program and with Medicaid. Uh, I don't know if you will remember, but back, uh, May 21, there was a letter to Secretary Vosh, uh, where North Carolina was placed on a warning status because of their food stamp, uh, processing rates or timeliness. Uh, we were one of five states that was placed in this warning status. At the time, the national average was 88% of processing timely and their federal requirement is 90%. North Carolina was at 84.6% at that point, uh, for, according to the federal statistics. The warning letter requires North Carolina to be at 90% for July, uh, through December of 2015 and 95%, which is above their normal requirement, uh, for January through June of 2016. Which means that people have to be able to purchase their food within 30 days of making that application, 95% of the time. Uh, there is a potential loss of $88 million to North Carolina if we do not meet those standards. And must, much of that money comes through to the counties. And for Pitt County, that's $1.8 million that comes to us, uh, for food and nutrition services. And that does not count what actually goes to the recipients themselves. Uh, the state thus far has done a variety of things to try and improve the, the situation. Uh, computer tracking of applications has been modified in NCFAST. They did that on July, by, uh, July the 13th. And now we track to 25 days instead of 30 days, which is the processing standard, so that we can back that up, so that more of our cases will be timely. Uh, the state has had numerous calls, conference calls, training sessions, own best practices and regular reminders, uh, are going out. Uh, the state continues to focus on process and workflow with the counties. Now what we in Pitt County have done, we immediately notified our local processing goals from 30 days to 20 days. Uh, we are manually tracking that. We also established calendars to help our workers track locally, uh, what they're doing and how they're doing it. Uh, we have done training and we're doing monitoring by our supervisors and our lead workers to make sure that we are doing what we need to do and doing in a timely manner. So we're not asking for things that, um, we shouldn't be asking for. Uh, we are not holding things longer than we should. Uh, we're trying to make sure that we know why things are pending. And we still have the requirement that we cannot close or deny until the 30th day. So there are going to always be cases that are going to pend at least 30 days. So where are we in Pitt County? Um, the food and nutrition services in July 1 had a 99.8% timely, using the old standards that the state had set of the 30-day tracking process. July 13, when the new calendar or the new tracking was implemented during that first week, we had one overdue application and one overdue review. So we did very well. And those were the only two that were pending without good cause. I can't give you a better figure than that right now because we haven't been in the new tracking long enough. Uh, but we are monitoring every day to see what's going on. Um, so that's pretty much what's going on with food and nutrition. I, I, I don't know beyond what we're doing here in Pitt County and then of course what the state is, is working on to try, whether we'll meet that or not. That's a very high standard, that 95% standard is an extremely high standard that they've got to meet. Um, so I'll stop here and see if you've got any questions about food and nutrition.
So, so the 99.8%, that is versus the 95% new standard?
Right. I mean, the 99.8% is what Pitt County was doing.
Right, right.
Using the old 30-day processing, um, standard. Uh, so we were doing well, but the federal government says that was the wrong standard. Our standard was we had to complete, North Carolina's counties have always believed that as long as I completed the case within 30 days, I was good to go. We were not. The person has to be able to eat within 30 days, which means it needed to back up. Uh, but the only thing we had to track with at that point was the 30 days that was in the computer system. And at that point, Pitt County had 99.8% of their cases timely. So, uh, but that is not accurate because we technically need to be eating by 30 days.
And we don't know what that number is.
We haven't been in it long enough to get a good month figure. Uh, but I, as I said, in that first week, we had one case that was an application that pended beyond the timeliness, that did not have good cause. And we had one review that pended too long without good cause. So, and, and we do hundreds of cases a week. So that's a very small number. Um, in a month or so, I should be able to give you much better figures. And I can't give you state figures because again, we've got the new, the new process and, um, reports are just too new.
And the 95% is a state number.
That's what the state has got to meet for the federal, all 100.
All 100 counties have got to average the 95.
That's right. For six months.
Or else we stand the possibility of losing federal funds.
That is correct.
So I hope everybody is working very, very hard on that because we can't afford to lose the federal funds.
All the counties acknowledge that and, uh, will work very hard, I'm sure, to try and prevent that from happening. And, and again, the state is trying to work with us. Our goal, um, is to try now, a- and we should have always been doing this, but our goal clearly is if we can process on the, the case on the day it comes in, we need to do that. Um, and that is, um, that's what the state is now pushing all of us to say, we will process on the day it comes in if we have the information to do so.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond?
Yes, sir. And what the state is saying, the paperwork is fine, but biscuits are better, right?
That's right. Exactly. Exactly.
Mr. McGowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At one time, y- you were saying that NCFAST has so many problems with it in terms of, uh, implementing the system fairly. Are you saying now that it's, it's improving and, and it's, it's delivering what it's supposed to do?
Well, what I would say is every day that NCFAST operates, it gets a little better. And every day that NCFAST operates, our staff get better in using the new system. Are there still problems? Certainly on any given day, there might be a problem. That's one of the issues. We have several of our cases that are pending because we can't get them, the, their, um, on hold in the NCFAST system and somebody in, uh, in, at what they call the help desk has got to get it so it will process. Little things like that are going to happen periodically, but it's getting better. It really is getting better. Now briefly on Medicaid, unless somebody's got another question about food and nutrition, just because y'all have worried about Medicaid, I know for the whole year that I've been here. So we're getting close to the end. Um, on your handout, you will see that our Medicaid applications now, 91% of our applications are timely. The state goal and the federal goal is 90%. So we are doing well from that standpoint. Many of those that are pending are pending with good cause. Um, on July, um, the report that came out July 15, Pitt County had 1.5% or 106 of the statewide overdue cases. Uh, statewide, it was 7,059. So, uh, we're doing, doing fairly well there, I would say. Uh, staff are really to be commended. Uh, and, and just to give you a little perspective, when I came in July, we had 1,466 applications pending without overdue. So they've made huge, huge progress. Um, Medicaid reviews, and this is the, this is what we've been working on for the last year, for sure. Uh, that same July 15 report showed that Pitt County had 2% of the statewide reviews that needed to be done. For us, that was 2,249 reviews. Um, as of Friday morning, no, Saturday morning, we had, um, 1,940 reviews still to be done. And we worked Saturday, so I don't have the most current numbers. We, um, have already completed 1,997 reviews in the month of July. We have, um, 1,940 left. So, and 10, and 10 days left to go and we still don't know Saturday's figure. So I'm very confident that we are going to be there or be extremely close. The state no longer is going to automatically roll, uh, cases forward. If we don't get them processed, they will terminate. So we, our goal is to process every review in the month that it's due. And, and we will do that. Um, so that's kind of where we are. And just as a, another point, we had 25,487 reviews to get done, uh, and we are now down to 1,997. And that's over a 12-month period. So they've, they've done tremendously well. We're still fighting, but they've done well, so.
Mr. Chairman? Yes?
Has she got mentioned that?
I'm sorry. I'd like to commend you and your staff, but just statistics speaks to the point of what you just said. But even more than that, uh, is far beyond expectations from my standpoint.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Ward?
And I'd like to kind of support that also, and thank you for your leadership, because this is about a year, your anniversary date?
A year this month?
Yes, and we are very pleased with the progress and your staff's willingness to work with you and move forward.
Thank you so much, thank you. They've done a wonderful job.
Mr. Man?
Yes, just wanted to echo what the board's saying. Ms. Elliott has done a tremendous job in her leadership in bringing the department back on track with the different programs and numbers and stats. And also, the last DSS board meeting, she reported, just want to bring this out, that she's in the process of looking at a reorganization of the DSS department to make it more efficient and effective in terms of how it delivers services. And those changes are slowly coming forward, as she works with county staff, as well as with the State Department of Health and Human Services.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Continue great work.
Motion to approve the consent.
Mr. Chairman, there's two things on consent, if I can just point them out. One, on item number thirteen, which is the acceptance from the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program. For that amount of money, there's a budget amendment that's been put before you that goes with those numbers. It was left off the agenda. And then, the second thing, on the minutes from the June fifteenth meeting, it was brought to our attention that the appointment of Max Joyner to the ABC Board was not included. We have amended those minutes, added him to it. So, those are just two clarifications on the consent agenda.
Approved with those two changes?
Mr. Chairman, may I make a remark about the consent agenda? Is that where we are now?
Mr. Owens, go ahead.
I intend to vote for the agenda, but I've got a couple of observations I'd like to make. On page one eleven, the breakdown of that hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars says for supplies, training, undercover, I know that, motor vehicles. When I vote for an amendment, I'd like to know what is going to fall within each category. Of course, I know it's a hundred and twenty-eight, but I don't ask it this time, but that's my preference. Secondly, Mr. Chairman, on page one thirteen, the funds there that has come through, the collection of taxes is going to motor vehicles, which I think is a point well taken. It might alleviate some of the problems we've had in the past with those two items as to regard the need for vehicles. And lastly, page one twenty-four, that is another reward to us. But I'd like to know if that local match is a payment in kind, or is it to be money coming from the balance fund?
Mr. Man?
On the...
Page, page one twenty-four?
One twenty-four, the hundred thousand dollars, one hundred thousand three hundred and three dollars, these are North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program funds. There's a local match of thirty thousand and ninety-one dollars that does come from the general fund. This is the third-year funding for the blood alcohol testing project.
So, we've already passed that in essence?
Yes.
And we agreed for the thirty thousand each year to come out of the general fund?
Correct.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, continue voting on Ms. Perkins-Williams and Mr. Owens. It's all right. Next item is the RFP for radios. Mr. Dickerson?
Good morning. Before I forget to say this, Mr. Ed Neltum, the engineer with Kimball is in the audience, in case you have any technical questions concerning this RFP. And I'll just summarize what we're asking for quickly for the people at home. Increase signal strength to achieve more reliable communications across the county. Provide an alerting system to the EMS stations, which is maybe a siren, a bell, or something that is louder than just a pager. These people sometimes work at several different places, and I'm sure we all would want somebody who's had some sleep to come to our house if we have a heart attack or whatever. So, they need loud communication, so be sure to hear. Provide a new paging system with pages on VHF, UHF. We've just learned that we had problems for years with Halifax County, for example, setting off Pitt County's VHF pagers. And if we increase our signal strength on VHF, we'll be setting off somebody else's pager. So, FCC won't allow that. And then, we design and build a system in compliance with the specifications that Kimball has set out in the hundred and ninety-five-page document that has been sent to you. With that, I'd be glad to try to answer any questions or call ahead to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I know there's been a lot of work put into this. Mr. Farley's put in a lot of work on the committee, I've been on that committee. And I know that some of the, just want to address one thing that was mentioned to me, that you know that they're a little concerned about the switch from the VHF. But it's like I've told them, winning fixes everything, so as long as it works, no one will care. We just want to make sure that it'll work. I think that's the only real concern I heard coming out of that final meeting to release the, before the release of the RFP. It looks like we have a good plan. And Phil, this might be your last time with us, right? Are you staying with us through the end of this project?
Correct.
I'm glad to work on this project to the end.
So, you're not just going to leave a big bill and run out the door?
Right.
Anybody have any questions? Ms. Ward, then Mr. Garris, then Ms. Perkins-Williams?
I know that the chairman just spoke to the UHF, VHF item. Explain that one more time, and I looked through the big book we got with all the information in it, and of course, a lot of it I did not understand. Can you give me an idea of what this, just this part, it might cost a range of having to change?
Half million.
Okay. And we didn't realize that in the beginning, when we first approved this project?
No.
Okay, thank you.
My only concern here is to make sure that these recommendations are coming to us from the committee that we appointed, and that committee is comprised of users. So, this is what hopefully will meet the needs of the users, correct?
Yes, we've put forth tremendous effort to solicit input and keep them informed. And I think to a person, they would tell you that.
I know that you have, because we have been getting that communication, and I really appreciate the users being willing to give their time and you keeping them totally informed. I did have one other question, and I don't want to open up a major can of worms here, but I was concerned about this recommendation not being a unanimous vote from that committee. It says one person voted against it. Have we addressed what that concern was?
There was one person who had a problem with migrating over to UHF on the paging.
I think the concern, if I can expand upon that, was that they were concerned that if we were going to migrate from UHF to VHF, they're concerned if we were going to spend half a million dollars, they thought that we could possibly fix the UHF system rather than migrate. Phil, is that correct?
Yes. And just so you'll know, you'll probably hear that they're, they got UHF license out there that we could use to expand the system. The only problem with that is, we don't own those licenses. If the licenses are amended, then you would have to conform with the new government standards plus. We don't want a system that's going to be interfering with other people and other people interfering with us.
Right. The consulting engineer on the project recommended that we migrate from one platform to the other. And even if it's a half a million dollar more in expense, we want to make sure that the pagers are working properly and that it serves the purpose to what they're needed for.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Williams?
It seems that when I look at EMS, and I see EMS and anything, I'm alert, my personal alert antenna goes up. Because when I was campaigning, there was a question regarding cross-communication in times of emergencies. Will this address any of that, that everyone can communicate? I'm looking forward to hearing when the system can communicate in an emergency with all emergency departments and whatever, that the sheriff doesn't have a separate, and this one doesn't have a separate, and then the fire and rescue, and you know. I want to, there should be some effort, total cross-communication, so that the citizens in this county can be assured that the right people are getting a message that there is an emergency.
Yes, let's go back to Hurricane Floyd for a second. We didn't have proper interoperability, intercommunications. We've had the equipment to do that since we purchased a new radio system a few years ago. We just didn't have the ability to project the signal out with that equipment. So, with this project, we'll be fixing that, so we will have interoperability. Good example is Viper. Right now, we can talk to Highway Patrol and state emergency management agencies through Viper, and we can even use Viper when, if our system was down. So, we do have that interoperability.
And the signal reaches all the way to the edge of the line, like over the Beaufort and those areas that are remote, like Bethel, and I can't think of it, Tickby, all the way over there near Beaufort County line, and you know. That's what concerns me, that rural people can get the emergency services.
It will reach those areas. Now, there are weather conditions, other conditions that maybe sometime somewhere, it won't work. But a hundred percent radio system would cost many more millions of dollars than what we're spending.
Are you aware of where it will not work?
We will be before we're finished.
Okay, I'm concerned that you are conscious about it, because you know, okay?
Phil, it's my understanding it should work everywhere with the occasional anomalies in atmosphere and weather, if there's a thunderstorm, or just being frequencies the way the waves are at times. But in general, it should work everywhere.
That's correct. You have things like skip, for example. This is a long time ago, I remember working with DOT in Louisiana. Ferry operations would completely overwhelm us at times, even skips. So, there'll be times that we can't fix, that there'll be a few problems, but there'll be far, far less than you have now.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Owens?
I think I've discussed this with Phil previously, but Phil, we know the known areas that we have difficulties already, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, this will be one contract for the whole county, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Was there any consideration in having maybe two contracts? Contracting the area where you have no problems, and contracting the area where you have problems? Would, I'm sure everybody's considered everything, but would that have diminished the cost in the areas where there are no problems, maybe to give some refuge to spend more the areas that have problems? I think you've answered that previously, but I want you to answer it here today.
We haven't looked at two contracts. What we have looked at is placement of a tower, so that we'll address those areas that where you can't communicate or can't communicate well now. There won't be as much, if it's already working, generally, there won't be any improvement there. We've also concentrated on forty-one locations where we think the worst conditions are, or we know that the worst conditions are. So, I think we've addressed your issue, but not with two contracts.
Mr. Chairman, one more question. This is by way side. We thank you for all your many years of service, Phil. It's been mentioned here today that we've got a new engineer. I didn't want to see you leave, still don't want to see you leave. But have you brought that new engineer in on this deal, and is he prescribed to a part of it?
He doesn't begin until the twenty-seventh, but we...
So, he doesn't answer, know anything about this?
Not yet, but he will be part of it once we get here.
And Phil is going to stay on and complete this project. This is his baby. If it takes him the next ten years, he can retire on this piece until that's over.
Well, that's the reason we kept the project, so we could keep him.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Man?
That's a big investment for you.
Mr. Hammond?
I will go back to the point that Mr. Jimmy Garris made earlier about the one negative vote. That does not change anything relative to what you was associated with, does it, Phil?
No.
Is there a motion?
I will remind you again that the negative vote was due to one particular aspect of what we're proposing to do.
Which will be fixed when it works.
Home contract in general.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the staff to release the RFP.
Second? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Dr. Maure?
He's put on a little weight since the last time he was here.
Got taller.
Didn't compensate though.
One does not offset the other. I'm standing in for Dr. Maure this morning. He is on a well-deserved vacation for about a week. The item on the decision agenda is a rather large grant that originated from the Center for Disease Control. They awarded five regions within North Carolina a grant to combat some acute health issues we have, particularly here in eastern North Carolina. And I'm going to try to get these out, obesity, diabetes, heart disease, and stroke prevention. This grant is a regional grant. The Pitt County Health Department will be the lead health department for a ten-county area. We will hire, with your approval, we will hire two health educators and a half-time fiscal administrative person to oversee this grant. It's very directed towards particular items that we can and cannot do. This is a three, well, four-year grant, really. April and May were the first two months of the first year, and now, this will be the second, the first full year, the first year of the remaining three years of this grant. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if I can. Amy Haddam, who is the Division Director for our Health Education Division, is here. This grant will fall under her division, so she will oversee.
Thank you, Mr. Garris.
Uh, yes.
I have a question.
Mr. Chairman, may I continue?
Yes.
First of all, I'd like to commend you and your organization for being one of the four in the state.
Thank you.
One of five. One of five, excuse me, that's very commendable. My question is, you say this grant is for four years. What happens at the end of the four years?
At the end of the four years, like other grants that we've got from the CDC, hopefully, we will have the infrastructure, the, all the work that we've done for the grant in place within the ten counties. When the grant goes away, as with all of our grants, the staffing also goes away.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Ms. Williams?
This page on the back of this, page one ninety-two?
I'm sorry, Mr., I don't have that page, but I...
Is that, this is a part of that, this little bit of chart? I like to be able to read what I'm voting for, if this is a part of it, you know. I really am scrunching.
Now, I know what you're talking about. I had the same problem. When they shrink it down, it gets kind of small.
Is it something we're voting on?
That is the budget for the next twelve months for this grant.
I can't see it. And I can use magnifying glasses, and it runs together. So, it would be nice if we all had Mark Owens' eyeglasses that blows it all up before we vote on it, because we're talking about some stuff here.
It's just breaking down the taxes, the retirement, and office supplies and things needed, and the salary.
Well, y'all might not need to know.
That totals up to the four sixty-nine, three thirty-four.
I'm just nosy.
You're right, but you're coming, Mary. You're right, but you're coming.
I am. Y'all understand, I don't have but one vote, so I got it.
Mr. Coles? One ninety-two?
Maybe you can see it, Daniel.
Do you have a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Do you have a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Let me hear.
Mr. Coulson had a comment, and Mr. Hammond was going to make a motion.
No, I had a-
I, I look at this-
While we were dealing with the Health Department.
With great doubt that this money is being spent well. At the end of this period, will, will things really be better? How many dozens, maybe even hundreds of such things have come before us in the past? And here we are, we've still got the same problems. You can't legislate moral change, you can't legislate behavioral changes. This money is coming from the federal government, correct?
Correct.
Does anybody know that the federal government is not balanced budget? Where does this money come from? We have printed $1.7 trillion printed, created, created out of nowhere money. $1.7 trillion that our children and grandchildren and I have paid back. We do this today, and I think that we are largely throwing mud at the wall. It's not going to do anything except give two and a half people a job for a while. I can't vote for it. At some point, we have got to say enough's enough. It bothers me that the legislature, while this is often a tangent, the legislature mandates in the Department of Social Services that if Washington, out of their divine wisdom, decides to give money to the local area, but there's got to be matching funds. We are required by state law, mandated by state law, that we have to provide those funds. And there are no matching funds here, but where did this money come from?
It's, it's federal.
We're going to borrow it from China or we're going to print it. I cannot, in good faith, vote for this or things like this because I do not believe that they are going to change the behavioral patterns of enough people to justify $469,000. That I would rather see that kind of money being given to the Sheriff's Department to give the deputies a raise that they so, so, so much deserve. We don't pay them a living wage. And yet, I don't know, I guess you can tell I'm a little bit testy about this, but when, at what point do we finally say, as a local community, you know, federal government, we appreciate this, but no, thank you, because you're not helping us. You're not helping the country, you're not helping the county. And when you said it was five areas or five grants, well, this one's for 10 counties. What are the other four for? How many are they? 10, 10 counties each? Well, we've got 100 counties in North Carolina, so do we have 100 counties now? What do the other four get? They get about a half million dollars each? In the big picture, two and a half million dollars doesn't look like squat. But who in this room wouldn't like to have $469,000 in their bank account? Thank you.
Mr. Hammond. Do you have a comment or a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I need to ask a question of the technical.
Go ahead.
Since, I, since I don't see the budget, that's what I'm having a problem with. I want to abstain, and I don't know how to do that on this machine. I can't do it, I gotta vote?
Unless you have a conflict of interest.
Oh, okay. Oh, my God. All right.
Or you could ask for that.
Well, you, based on the fact that I can't see this, and, and, and I, I'm, I'm one of them kind of people, okay? So I'm ready to vote.
You can vote yes, no, or you can make a motion that it be table until you can get the abstract where you can see it and you're ready to make a better decision.
Well, I'm not going to vote for it because it's little, and that's me and I'm voting for something I can't even see and read. So that, 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 that ain't me, y'all. I know, I know I'm a new character on here, but I just want you to know where I am at this juncture. I mean, and I'm being straightforward with you, I don't see this budget.
Do you want to table it until you can-
I make that motion if I can.
You can't? Motion to table?
Is that all right with y'all? I just, we need to see it. We need to see what we're voting for.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Perkins to table it to the next meeting so she can get, so she understands what we've got, and it was seconded by Mr. Coulson. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, point of information, is there any timeframe on this?
When is the next commissioner's meeting?
August 3rd.
I, that wouldn't be a, you know, we, we could handle that for sure, if that's the pleasure of the board.
Thank you.
The only comment I'd like to make, and I'll vote for this, is that we've had this in our packet since Thursday, and in going through it, I, I could make it out, and then I pulled out my husband's trusty magnifying glass. And basically, all it is, is it's a statement of what the salary and the retirement, just like you do with any grant related to the people who will be working on the grant in the different counties. So with that said, I'll vote to table this and we'll revisit it in August, but we have had access to this.
Let's vote. All right, thank you.
See you in August.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Holder.
This next item, Dwayne is at a conference today, but this item came before the board on May the 5th of last year, and basically it was for $95,000 worth of repair work at Sherwin Memorial Library, which, as you're aware, we share two-thirds, one-third.
Will we approve?
I second it.
Thank you.
We presented to you three sections of the personal ordinance that we'd like to have amended and updated, primarily three sec, three of the sections, 108, 128, and 129 are relative to the bank holiday and going forward, since all employees, we paid for the holidays as earned. We're just trying to remove any language that references bank holidays and pull it out of the personal ordinance. Section 109 is just updating the holiday list relative to the state holiday schedule, which we've always followed in the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Before, before we vote, I just want to click, because I've read it, and I think I've confused myself by reading it too many times. If, so this will just simply state that a non-exempt employee will be paid for the time they work?
As well as the holiday.
As well as the holiday.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And an exempt employee who works on the holiday will receive-
Holiday pay. Will be paid for the holiday.
Like all other employees are being paid.
Okay, so they will receive extra compensation?
No.
No.
They will receive time off?
This, this would allow them to flex those hours within that pay period. As an exempt employee, exempt employees, based upon how they're, they're classified as exempt, normally are required to work the number, number of hours to get the job done, but also if, if they're going to have to work a holiday, we ask that, that they look at flexing it, taking it off either early or later within that, that pay period, just like if they would, if an exempt employee has to work hours over during a regular week that doesn't have a holiday, they, if they're able, they, they flex it. If they're not able, well, you're an exempt employee, and sometimes that's just what happens.
Mr. Manager.
I understand.
They'll be paid a nice pay period, won't they?
They would be paid the eight hours like all employees across the entire organization are paid for that holiday, but as an exempt employee, they would not receive any extra compensation.
This just kind of clarifies what it means to be an exempt employee in all departments.
Yes.
Okay. Because this is what's been going on.
And, yes, in the majority of the departments.
And the majority of the departments.
Unless you'll direct us otherwise, now that you-
So if you, sorry to-
That's okay.
And apparently I didn't confuse myself, that's what I thought it was. But, so if you work a holiday and you're exempt, but you cannot take that time off within the pay period, you're just out?
Yes, based on the way this is written. There would be no additional compensation, and we have no place for them to bank compensatory time, and we've removed the bank holiday language, so.
But they're the ones making decisions to work.
And that would only occur most of the time if the holiday happens to fall on the last day of the pay period. Majority of the time, that's probably not going to be the case. But if it happens to fall on the last day of the pay period, then yeah, that could happen. They would be paid for the eight hours of holiday, and the other time, if they worked on that holiday, would not be compensated.
Got you.
Wouldn't be additional compensation.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Mr. McGowan.
Florida, are we then consistent with all the other counties throughout the state in terms of-
Primarily, yes.
What, so primarily, other counties?
You will find some county, it's a mixed bag. You know, counties do, and municipalities do different things. You know, we have some who may allow them to bank it for a long period, may allow them to bank it as an exempt employee, because it doesn't harm anything, but they may allow them to bank it. They may give them extra time to flex it out. I haven't found one yet that pays them for it. There may be one out there, maybe I just hadn't asked Wright County, but I haven't found another county who would pay them for the holiday as well as the time worked on that holiday. But they may give them additional time to take the time back off if they worked on a holiday.
I, I'd like to see, you know, that's how, and obviously there's more than just me sitting up here, but I'd like to see it something where if you ended up working holiday, or you could get that extra time to flex, or some sort of holiday time for that holiday.
Okay.
And I understand, and for the public's purposes, non-exempt means you're paid by the hour, exempt means you're paid by the year. And, and, you know, sometimes you work a lot over and the pay doesn't change, but when it comes to holidays, I, I just think if someone has to work on Christmas, maybe they should get some bank time or, or at least have extra time to, to flex that back.
And the reason we, we mention in that pay period is because that's the easiest way to keep the record.
Sure.
Because we get paid, you know, every two weeks. So that's the method, we're paid in the counties every two weeks. That way, we can track the time in the pay system, because if you work 45 one week and you only work 35 the second week, it all comes out to be the 80 hours in a two-week period. But we'd have to find a means to track it. It's doable, but we just have to find a means to track it.
Mr. Hammond, Ms. Williams, then Ms. Ward.
Mr. Chairman, the statement that you made not be compensated is the, is the, is the part that I have a problem with.
Okay.
I don't want any employer with Pitt County to work and, 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 and they hear you or anybody else in, in personnel say not be compensated. If you work, you will be compensated by Pitt County.
They will be compensated for that holiday because that's a benefit that's given to every employee, so the compensation for that particular day is the holiday pay. So everybody gets paid for the holiday. So they're getting some compensation for the day. I think the question is whether or not they will be paid for the holiday and additional hours if they have to come in for a few hours on that holiday and work as an exempt employee.
If it's owed to them, they will be compensated. Is that right?
Yes, sir. And keep in mind, too, that the majority of your exempt employees have salaries built such that you may end up working, your salary's going to be a little bit higher than your non-exempt employees typically. So the expectation is, as the manager said, you work until you get the job done.
My question is, usually, these are the people making the decision to work when you're looking at exempt personnel having worked in the state and on that kind of, these are the people that are making those decisions, and they can choose to or not to. And that's, that's, that's what I'm hearing. And if you decide to work, you need to know that it comes out on your end.
Ms. Ward.
Two things. This is just sort of the way that it works in most businesses and organizations. And when you come on board and you do, if you've been hired, you sit down with the human resource officer and he or she explains this sort of thing to you. So when you sign the contract, you understand what it means to be exempt and not exempt, and to be hired to work until you get the job done. And it, you're right, Mary, it is their decision when that time comes, and they're usually the ones, like you said, that are in positions that realize that is going to happen, whether it's a holiday, a vacation day, or a Saturday. I think about people from this building that went to the courthouse after a big leak. I can't even remember the, where that fell in the year, but there was a lot of work on Saturday and Sunday getting water vacuumed up and cleaned up and that sort of thing. And I think even the top official was, top contract was there doing that. So anyway, I'm in favor of it, and we do have a motion, don't we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion, say, any further discussion? Let's vote.
Thank you.
It didn't take, Mr. Hammond.
He's pushing the button.
Yeah, I hear it, but I just-
Sometimes that don't work right. That ward's fault.
Exactly. You're right. As little as I know about electronics, if I did it, it was an accident.
We have a budget amendment up next.
Yes, on this, for the PATS, Pitt Area Transit System, $80,000 budget amendment. This is for the final year into counting. This fund had a ongoing deficit that's been carried for a number of years. We were trying to work that down, but due to a couple of factors dealing with a reduction in Medicaid reimbursements-
Will we approve it?
Second.
Next up, we need a voting delegate for our annual conference.
I'd like to nominate Jimmy Garrick, if he would be willing to do that.
Second.
I'd just like to make sure that he calls if we got to vote on something, because you're going to go and you don't get consulted, you feel like you're an idiot.
Would you like to be the voting delegate?
Huh?
Would you like to be the voter?
No, I don't want to be the voting delegate, but I want you to confer with me if you need to, so that I don't feel like I'm left out.
I always confer with you when I need to.
Mr. Hammond.
You, you know what I mean?
I know exactly what you mean. You're covered.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hammond, we need you to vote on the delegate.
Delegate.
As we wait for Mr. Hammond to vote on item number six, on item number seven, the Healing Transitions Facility, ECBH, which is now Trillium, or is pronounced that, Health Resources, has asked for this to be polled. They are still in the process of reviewing it, but just want to make a quick comment. This was presented to you at the May 4th meeting, and this is the, the project called Healing Transitions, and this is the proposal to, to build a facility out of the Office Park North of the River for folks who are, are dealing with alcoholism and, and drug-related issues. This is a, a good project for Pitt County, both for our 24-county area, catchment area for mental health as well as for Pitt County. We plan on bringing this back to you at another meeting once we get a more fuller review from Trillium Health Resources.
Motion to approve?
Well, there's no action needed. It's just, it's being pulled from the agenda.
And where is this going to be located again?
At the Office Park North of the River.
North of the river. North of the river.
I'm trying to hear, I'm trying to hear.
Mr. Hammond.
Mr. McGowan. Page 208, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McGowan.
I also say on this committee, and, and this project is going to be beneficial for, for the citizens, especially north of the river, and also, you know, it's going to add to helping deal with problems that we have in, in the mental health area.
Agreed.
So it's, it's a great project.
Move on, next to our appointments to the Grimesland Board of Adjustments. It's a pleasure to the board.
Motion to appoint Tammy Ferguson. One, one moment here, this is in Grimesland, correct?
Yes.
Yes, I was going to direct a question to Dwayne, who is not here, having to do with PATS, and that's Pitt Area Transmits System. I've received a number, a number of complaints from citizens in Grimesland that they are underserved by PATS. I'd like someone in authority to look into that.
We'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maure. Any other nominations? Let's vote on, Ms. Ferguson.
I don't want to miss my thing this time. That, he really is pushing the button, it is being cantankerous.
Thank you. All right, next is an appointment to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team.
Motion to appoint David McCarthy.
Motion to appoint David McCarthy.
Any further nominations? Let's vote.
Which one was that?
David McCarthy, Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team.
I'm trying to keep up.
Mr. Hammond, yours is still not cooperating with us.
It will only take no.
Your clicker's not cooperating.
Because when you push no, it came right up.
Thank you. Next is an appointment to the Board of Health.
I'd like to nominate Frank Bradham.
Any further nominations?
I wanted to nominate Rex Fleming, I saw him in the packet somewhere. There is no one on that board from District 2. Is this correct, Kim, as to who's on this board? I don't see anyone from District 2. I'd like to see somebody from District 2 represented on any board they in, can.
Yes, you're correct.
Rex Fleming is in here somewhere.
I second the motion.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to see him on the Board of Health because we don't have anybody from District 2 on this board, and we need to be represented.
I thought that, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Is there an application in here?
There's one in here somewhere, I saw it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I thought that there were seats assigned to a district. So, to answer Mayor's question, let's verify what she's asking. So, there should be one, though.
I don't see anyone.
But the one up now is at large, isn't it? Isn't that what the document was requesting?
It's at large, but there's no one from District 2 on this board, Mark. If this information is correct, and I look at it for that reason.
What name did you say?
Rex Fleming. He's in here somewhere, I saw it.
Not for the Health Board.
Oh, you gotta do for that?
Yes.
Yeah. It's specific to the board.
Well, I really think we need someone from District 2 on the Board of Health, so if we can hold that one, I'd appreciate it.
Can you serve in the interim till we find someone?
Say what?
Can you serve? Can you serve in the interim till we find someone?
There are several north of the river applicants that have an application on file.
Yeah.
But that's not one of them.
They're on file, but they're not.
No, well, I don't want to use the same people all the time, because it's enough of us out there to spread it around. So, if that's the case, I will. But I don't want to be serving on it, and I don't want to be able to do that. I want to get a citizen. And I think our citizen wants to be involved because they are coming forward. So, if we can hold that, I appreciate the gesture, but I'm busy.
Motion to?
Can we nominate one of these? Can you nominate one of these District 2 people that is already in here, Mary?
There's Anthony Herring, there's Ernest Lee.
Well, I talked to Anthony Herring about serving on the Board of Adjustment, and he said he would take the training and do when you talk to somebody. I don't want to, you know, change up, they might think I'm trying to switch.
There's not another Health Board meeting, I believe, before our next meeting. So, your desire to hold it, you want to put that in the form of a motion, hold it to the August 3rd meeting?
Some of, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all for being patient with me.
Make sure that people have their application that has to be on 20 days prior to.
Because there's three already from District 2 that are in here.
If I heard Ms. Perkins-Williams correctly, she wanted to switch it up and not reappoint the same people that tend to serve on here.
I was confirming the vote, Mr. Chairman, for Rex Fleming.
He's in here somewhere, but they didn't recommend him for this, but I was willing to put him on for that because he's worked at Pitt Memorial Hospital for a long time. He's in here somewhere.
We need him to apply and to specifically say he wants to be on the Board of Health.
Okay, well, then we'll do that, okay?
We have a motion to delay till the August 3rd, is there a second? If there's no second, it's gonna die for the life of a second, and we'll return to the original.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Second.
And then that would be a substitute motion, Mr. Chairman, since you have an original motion on the floor, and then you'd vote on that first.
Correct, by rule, vote substitute motion first. Mr. Coulson, second.
No, I meant on mine.
It was a nomination.
I know I don't, I didn't, I thought that didn't make sense. What are we voting on now?
It's a table.
Okay. Because I'll withdraw my motion if that.
Mr. McGowan? Thank you. All right, next up, we have an appointment to the Board of Adjustment, the Pitt County Board of Adjustment. Any nominations?
You do it.
You said you were gonna do this one, Mary, but I'll be glad to the appointment to the Pitt County Board of Adjustment, Joe Whitaker.
Joe Whitaker is the one.
Any other nominations? Let's vote. Mr. Owens, confirm?
I got days' problems.
Bang on it, like you do your.
Next is appointment and reappointment to the Greenville Plan and Zoning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, this is appointments to the Greenville Board, and we have been looking for people from the ETJ. They are our appointments. And there are two voting seats that are open and one alternate. And I would like to, we have three people. I would like to nominate Mark Gillespie and John Collins for the two voting seats, and Anthony Herring for the alternate.
I second that motion.
Any further nominations? Let's vote. Madam Attorney, take us into closed session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A1 to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state or the United States and not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes and under subsection 6 to discuss the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or to investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee.
Thank you. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Motion second? Let's vote.
We take a short break in the interim, Mary?
Two minutes. All right, we're back in open session. Mr. McGowan, do you have a motion?
Yes, a motion to approve the closed session, minutes of June 15, 2015.
I second.
All right, let's vote. Mr. Farley? Reconfirm. Try it again.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. All right, and on the next matter, is any other business for the board to consider?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Owens?
I move that we give the county manager a 5% increase in salary.
Motion and a second, any discussion on the item? Mr. Farley, yours.
It's ours.
I know you tried, I heard it. All right, motion passes. Any other business comments? We'll start, Mr. Farley, coming around.
I had one issue, but Scott has already said he's gonna take care of reports of underserving Grimesland area of the PATS.
Wonderful. Mr. Garris?
No comment.
Mr. McGowan? Ms. Ward?
No comment.
Owens?
No comment.
I'd like to encourage the people living in District 2 to please submit your request to serve on boards and commission to our clerk, Kimberly Hines, at the Pitt County Manager's Office, 1717 West Fifth Street. We're in need for more people to serve on boards and commission for District 2. Thank you so much.
Mr. Coulson? Mr. Hammond?
No comment.
My only comment will be that I just ask everyone, if you would, pray for my son as he travels to Nicaragua. He'll be back in two weeks, God willing, and look forward to the work they're gonna do down there. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Second.